I made an order, everyone please stand and recite the Fledge of Allegiance.
Fledge of Allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, can I roll call, please?
Fisher?
Here.
Briggs?
Here.
Cavalier? Brecken?
Here.
Plot?
Here.
Menard?
Here.
Himma?
Here.
Jordy?
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, become to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please.
Matt Rasu, Tunder Gulf Terrace Drive. Council members, esteemed residents of Crookston, I stand before you today with a straightforward proposition. It is time to invest in our community by addressing the critical needs of our aging pool. The Crookston Pool is a beloved institution, a place where generations have learned to swim, families have made memories, and our community has come together. But let's be honest, it's showing its age as we discuss a lot lately. Years of wear and tear coupled with delayed maintenance have left our pool in need of significant repair and modernization. Patchwork repairs are no longer enough to truly revitalize our pool and ensure its longevity. We need a comprehensive approach. That's why I propose a special tax levy dedicated to funding these essential improvements. Let's not allow our pool to deteriorate further by supporting this special tax levy or whatever kind of solution we can come up with. We can, instead of kicking the can down the road, as we have discussed over and over and over again, we can bring our pool and make it the gym that it deserves to be. A place that future generations, you know, 50 years from now, 25 years from now, our grandkids and, you know, our future families that will move here to town. I think we owe it to them to, uh, to move forward with that. And I would love, I know we can't really move on anything right now, but if there's a council member who wants to take this up, I'm willing to dedicate volunteer time to try getting this through. I know it's complicated, but I think it's worth it. So, um, just think about it. I'm gonna be here. I don't want to have another fight at the end of next year about closing the pool. I wanna polish it up and make it the best in the region. I mean, we can do that. I think Crookston deserves it, and I think we can do it together.
Thank you. Anyone else from the chambers? Uh, Keenan, anybody on the phone bridge, please?
Nobody on the phone bridge, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, no presentations. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to tonight's agenda? Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved, Your Honor?
Thank you, Tim Clayton, thank you. Discussion. There are none. Can I roll call, please?
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Plot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Okay, a motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Henrys, are a second?
Second.
Second by Delane, thank you. Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Plot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jordy?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the regular agenda. Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 7.01 is a resolution regarding authorization, um, the redevelopment grant acceptance for the Red River Valley Shows.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor?
Thank you, Tim. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Christine, thank you. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have my written report. Uh, I have, this is a very worthy project. However, we would not be in good conscience, and there are many reasons to move forward with it. However, in good conscience, I have distributed to the council, these are maps and charts of the infrastructure work that was received from A2S this afternoon. The maps show, well, there's the red and the orange are the critical stages on the three pages. The three sheets are water, wastewater and storm water. Currently, 25% of our water system is past its useful life. Approximately 63% of our wastewater or sewer is past its useful life. And 42, 42% of our storm water is past its useful life. The bar graphs you have identify the expected costs. You broke them down in five-year increments. From 2025 to 2030, now, these, these amounts can be spread out. They don't, they don't have to be completed within this. They can be spread into the valleys that you see between other areas. But combined, we've got $130 million in infrastructure repair that is currently past its useful life. This is road, this is not including the roads that are over and above them. This is water, sewer and storm. The cost for the water and the wastewater on discussion with A2S is that the cost was put into place based on trenching over what is needed. Uh, we have an additional set of roads. Approximately every $18 million in bond cost is about $1,003,000 in payments. Water, wastewater, we'll pay for that. 30% of the total work. Each one of these would anticipated to be spent out of those water and wastewater funds. However, the debt does carry about, depending on how much it needs to go through, between 10 and 20% of the work would be levy obligated. Our reserves are not in a strong position. And our tax levy is at 91.9, 91.8% of tax capacity. Three out of the last 10 years, our tax capacity from the city, from the county has decreased. Uh, if you extrapolate that into an odds, if you're a gambling individual, we have roughly a 30% chance that our tax capacity will decline next year. We won't have those number, we won't have an idea from the county until probably end of March which direction they're anticipating our capacity to go to. But the point, our last budget was operating expenses only with very limited capital and zero contribution to our reserves. Again, EDA has worked very hard on this. They've put two years of work into it. This building is not going to come down and not going to be rectified without the assistance of government. No private sector business is going to abate the asbestos that's in this building. However, in moving forward, this council needs to have the full financial information and the obligations of the city before them so that they can adequately prioritize the direction they want to give, give us to go.
So with this, um, these improvements, what do you, what do you anticipate, I mean, sorry, are you thinking you want to build it into the budget over the next few years to cover this cost?
Uh, for the capital improvements?
Yes.
Uh, it will, it will be built into the budget. It would be bonded.
So what, what is our yearly payment then? Do you anticipate?
I'm going to extrapolate. We had a, the Red River Valley Shows project has a $1.59 million bond. The estimated payment on that is about $120,000 a year.
And then, what, if, once we start this project?
We're looking at roughly $5 to $6 million a year for the foreseeable future.
So I have a question on, on that. So we're sitting here saying, like, our tax base could go down, right?
There is the possibility.
Right. So, just playing devil's advocate here, we need to start doing things to bring our tax base up, which would be bringing in economics and jobs and things for people to do here, which would then hopefully bring people to move here and live here. Just trying to think, like, long-term, um, the Red River Valleys. Now, I know the numbers that we've had is just if it was the one organization would develop. I mean, I would hope over how many years we would have more development in that area. So, which then would bring, it wouldn't be that $1 million that has been reported. I mean, it would bring it down. There would be at some point a break even. Again, can't look in a crystal ball for anything. But to that point, whether it's the Red River Valley, Trail Grouds or somewhere else, we need to start doing some ways to bring jobs and businesses in here, which then bring people in here, which then brings our tax base up, which then brings things up, which then can fix other things. And I, I get it. I'm not saying the roads because of the water and the sewer, because, I mean, the basics of everything is water and sewer, but...
Challenges, even if we started tomorrow, would those houses and jobs and everything be here fast enough to help us with our immediate, say, five-year, even 10-year plan to help get us out of this hole that we're in?
Gotta do something.
Yeah, I think this is the other thing, is that in the last two years, the council's biggest three things was bringing business, housing and childcare. And this has been something that we've put out as a directive for the EDA to do for us, right? I think that the numbers that are showing are only if we had one business go in. I think they, Jeff also makes a, a good point in saying that this is not, this abatement is not going to happen without government help. I don't foresee deed in any other government agency wanting to work with us if we completely crap out, excuse my language, but this project. You know what I mean? And we have another possible project in the works with the rail line. And so I think that even if, like, technically, on the surface, if we went to apply for other deed grants maybe in a year or two, and we decided to say no to this, that that's not going to be at the back of the mind of those individuals who'd be making these decisions going forward, right? And so I think that also lowers our chances of getting that type of governmental aid going forward if we don't abide by what we've already done and already have put into this. I think that, you know, Jeff also said, well, we don't have anybody else, right, currently outside of this possible one entity that wants to do it. But I don't think that any entities are really willing to sign any type of documents until we've, like, committed to it, it's gone through, and then they know this is something that will be an actual existing property that they could possibly go into. So I think that we need to consider those things as well before we decide one way or another on this. But I, I personally am, am really trying to be pro-government or pro-business here because I, I, I don't think it would be crazy to say that this town in general is dying, right? We're losing 3% of our population year over year right now, and unless we have more industry that comes into this town, that's going to continue to happen. And I, I get the other pieces of this, and I, I don't think that if we do nothing, that's going to be the way that is, is going to get us any business, right? I, I would say the other thing is, having been to, like, Minnesota cities, having, having been on the board for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, Crookston has a reputation of being the city of no, of us saying we're going to do something, we don't follow through. So we're already competing with past historical context of past councils and how they've dealt with other governmental agencies. So I think that needs to be considered as well when we go forward with this.
When we made this decision earlier this year, we, we also thought that our reserves were in a lot healthier shape than what they currently are. And I mean, trust me, nobody wants that Red River Valley building to come down more than me. I mean, it's, ever since I've been here, I'm thinking what a, I saw when you first come into town, it's be nice if that thing was gone and developed. But, I mean, you all seen how, how difficult the levy was this year and the, and the, and our budget was this year, and we're to set the levy and stuff like that. I mean, at, at what point in time is, is it just too much? I mean, we're, I think this year, we probably got to the point where it was almost too much. So what's going to happen when we, when we, um... And I, and I get it, I don't want to go back on that redevelopment loan either, but I mean...
I think, I think there's more to this. Delaney and I would like Carrie to kind of, if she could give some clarification as well, because I don't know if I'm the one to articulate it.
I'd also like to, to point out that Carrie sent us a note this morning announcing that there is a deed grant to help mitigate contaminated projects. And I think that would, uh, be, you know, a boon to the Red River Valley project to mitigate the asbestos.
Carrie, wanna come up to the podium, please?
Sure, yeah. I'm not, I have to follow up. It just came through, so I have to follow up to see, Tim, if we can match that one to the Red River Valley Winter Shows, uh, property one. But, right, we're hoping, because when, in talking to deed before in a different state, because sometimes state to state, you can't match the grants. But the Red River, uh, the redevelopment grant is an exception. It pays for, um, engineering, it matches for engineers, which it doesn't normally happen on a grant. And it also does open up for some state funding. So I'm gonna call tomorrow, and I'll find out if we can match on that. But I do kind of want to address, um, just a couple of things as I was considering this project, though, because, you know, we have all worked, Nick, uh, Nichols called me this morning, and he was like, what is going on? So I read the headlines, yeah, Carrie, I love you guys. Word says that it, with the approximately $1 million cost to the city, the item will likely see a lot of discussion, and the city council currently does not have any available funds. I would agree with that. Jeff and I worked together to put the packet together that you did receive. Jeff requested that we keep it, uh, with just the Financial Institute only, as that is the only guarantee, so your worst-case scenario, would you agree with me on that?
And, and on that, yes. And the direction, the reason that I did that is we don't have anything else in the pipeline. And obviously, anything else that we develop on the other three parcels will reduce
the city's impact on that.
Uh, if, if this project goes forward, getting those three parcels populated would have to be a, a very high priority because the sooner we get them in, the better they impact the TIF district.
So if I could continue on, on that note, Jeff. So when I was working on this grant, and I, I included the whole grant as one of the attachments, so you guys could also rate it, seeing the potential for jobs, the potential for development. That was not something that I developed in my department. That was something that I developed in conjunction with deed. And they said those are reasonable expectations for that property, that we would be able to see a growth in that. And also, then I went with LAs and worked with them. I ran it back by them once deed and I worked on the proposed developments. If that happens, and we were able to get anywhere close to what the second TIF, there's a TIF district run in there. You have one run that says, uh, buildings only, and then we gave you the kind of synopsis that in five years, we would pay up to $250,000. You saw that one. But there's another TIF run in there that we didn't run all the analysis on, that says, if we have the analysis, here's what it would be. And that shows that we would break even in 2032, within nine to 10 years. Even if, even if we went the full 26, which I don't believe would take us that long to fill that acreage up, where I don't see that property sitting dead for 26 years, and that we would end up paying a million. I just wanted to address, because the community started calling me today saying, Carrie, are you putting, costing a million dollars? Because we have all these other projects, and we have no money in the bank, according to everything that we're hearing. So, no, we're not going to put out a million dollars tomorrow. No, it's not going to cost the city a million dollars if you see the building coming down. It is not costing a million dollars to take that building down. We would not be making any payments on, on that with the analysis Jeff and I worked on, and I worked with Todd from LAs. Our first payment would be in 2027 at the end, and that would be for $9,046. Now, I would hope between, we're also working with a property marketing, uh, Keenan did a good job. He found a marketing firm for us, and I worked with Jeff a little bit today to look at what we can do to start marketing that project and the industrial part going forward. Crookston is open for business. We are a progressive community. We have a lot of great things to offer this community. Is it going to put us in the hole? Possibly. But I'm just gonna look at what we have done in the EDA over the last two, I've been here for two years in September, so what am I here now? Almost two and a half years? In two and a half years, we have gotten about $6 million worth of grants from my department. And that does not include any matches. This will be the first time we will match any type of grant in the city. And I would put forward that $50,000 or $100,000, I would hope that with the record I have behind me, that I could look at you and I could tell you, in the next years, we will continue to find money to help you to offset those things. And if, for instance, you have to make a general obligation payment, I want to also show you how I'm going to offset that by helping you find money for water and sewer. We got near that 1.2 million to, to match the Highway 2 corridor. There's multiple, you guys have seen the list before, and I'm happy to bring it back at my next EDA report. I can send it. In addition, there just came a, an opening for the Minnesota Public Facilities Authority. They're opening up the Clean Water Revolving Fund and Drinking Revolving Fund to get your intended use permit, to get notices. That will open up. The $8 million that is on the list, which is, you know, is maybe that or maybe more, right? We can begin to look at that to see what we can do to get on the Public Facilities Authority, to begin to tap into other government funds besides bonding. There's other funding, and I have worked in many, many projects with infrastructure to help us offset the cost. If we can't afford that, the government can at least look at that, say, do you qualify for a PFA loan, grant, et cetera? So A2S is really good at finding funds, and if GO is the only, if a bond is the only way to do that, then Jeff is right, that's going to be really expensive. But if, but don't, don't for one minute think that we're going to stop looking for other money to help us offset what the taxpayers are going to have to pay for infrastructure. And even if we only do the infrastructure, we can't keep taxing our residents. I'm a resident of Crookston, you're a resident of Crookston. Looking at these numbers, if we, I don't want a sidewalk if I have to keep getting my levy raised. Tear it up. You know, we have to find funds and continue to look for funds to continue to offset what the taxpayers are already paying. And with that, I'm going to open up, is there any questions on what I'm saying? I know I'm kind of talking fast and rambling, but I, I don't want to just represent one part. Jeff gives us what's accurate, our worst-case scenario is we're going to pay a million dollars over 26 years. That's our worst-case scenario. That is not a reality based on the historical performance of my department.
And I would just like to add something, I think, Carrie, I think you missed, I think you forgot it. It's in your benefit, though. I do know that Carrie and Taylor are also looking at, uh, we did miss the 100% federal asbestos abatement grant because we were unable to take possession of the property on time. Carrie and Taylor are looking into, there are other federal asbestos abatement grants that they're looking into to help offset some of, some of the costs involved with this project.
To Jeff's point, if we have to delay a little bit because we can't start the project until a grant is awarded, if we need to push it back a few months, six months or something, the, the people that we're working with are totally happy to do that. The biggest thing right now is the Red River Valley Winter Shows is very committed to Crookston, and they would like to continue their efforts in Crookston, which means more investment in our community, and they're fun investments. They, they do activities. If you ever see that place when they have activities going on, there are horse trailers everywhere. It's a great community aspect, uh, and events, and they're looking at investing. Crookston has great infrastructure for them, as they noted. We have hotels, we have restaurants, so every time they do events, there's a lot of great things in Crookston. They are not looking to leave Crookston. They're looking for us to say, what can we do to work with you? And Jeff and I met with one of the board members, and I thought it was a positive, uh, meeting. In addition to that, we've got the, the Financial Institute is very ready to work and give us some money upfront to help us get moving on that. So those things are in order, but I didn't want to leave this, um, with the headlines from, hey, I love you guys, I always appreciate you. But that was a, that was a kind of a winger headline, and I hope that made some of you come to the council meeting tonight to hear this, right? Any questions on what I'm saying, or?
So you're confident over the next few years, you can bring more money to help the taxpayers of Crookston?
Yes, and Delane, I'm confident on that. And if it takes me five years to get us a couple of businesses in there, which I'm hoping it won't, I can guarantee I will continue to find money to help offset our other costs.
Well, they, they typically have a tax abatement, correct, when they move in? Is that, and then the tax abatement doesn't help bring in tax dollars to our...
We are putting a TIF district on, tax increment finance on this, and we're going to take all that money to pay back these general obligation bonds until the bond is paid. We're estimating right now, if we have businesses coming in there, it would take us around 10 years, and then that would start coming back in. And correct me, Jeff, if I'm misrepresenting or misspeaking, because you've probably worked as much TIF as I have.
Right now, with the, with the one parcel, uh, the district is anticipated to bring, I believe, $36,000 a year. And the way that's calculated is, with the redevelopment TIF, it's the bare land, the city would still get the money from the bare land for the base tax. Anything built increments, any increases in the value of the tax, tax base goes to the TIF district, and it's restricted for repaying, paying for that redevelopment. I would anticipate if we put the one project, we're getting $36,000, if we have three more projects in there that are likely, would you say it's fair, likely slightly smaller scale?
Yeah, we did, when we, if you look at the assessment on the application, you'll see that we made it smaller because that is a significant investment that one company is making, correct?
So we would be looking at the TIF district, instead of covering 30% or 20, 25% to 30% of the payment, it could be anticipated that with full, with a full development, the TIF district could cover probably close to 75% of the payment. And then the city would be able, as the TIF district continued past payment of the bonds, if the bonds were paid off, then the city could recoup some of that money back as a reimbursement.
It's pretty, it's pretty standard of, of way of, of investing and getting businesses into your community.
One of the concerns I have is this happened here several months ago, is, um, we had a lift station that failed, and it filled several houses full of raw sewage. So I mean, do we have, is there anything within our budget to, to fix that issue that happened then?
Brandon X has a project scheduled, uh, for this, this year to rehab, rehabilitate and upsize our sewer lift station and our down there. They're waiting on a, what's, I want to use the proper word. The engineers are modeling what size pipe is the best pipe to use based on the usage to upgrade the system, and also identify whether they can, uh, do a lining with a burst, or whether they're going to have to redo with new pipe. But that, as far as that lift station is concerned, that, that project is already on the, on the table in the, in the sewer.
And budgeting it for...
And the only reason why I bring that situation up is, which, which we're going to have to, there's going to be other situations probably similar to that. That, we don't even know what's going to happen, and the thing that I have is, are we going to be able to afford to fix the stuff that we have in our own infrastructure? I mean, based on this year's budget, I mean, we're, we are just barely, I mean, we're not, we're not, we're just getting by another year with this budget. We're just paying our, paying our, basically paying our employees and paying our bills, our normal bills. We're not sticking any way to, to help our, our, um... We're not sticking any way to, to help our, our.
Reserves.
Yeah, reserves, sorry.
Yes, sir.
And then, um, so yeah, it's.
Delaine, I think that also, as Carrie had mentioned earlier, between their department and AE2S, I mean, partly what kind of put.
And Public Works, and Public Works.
And Public Works. But part of what put them apart from the other engineering firms is they actually have a department that helps with grant funding and looking for different programs that help offset costs.
Yeah, very rarely do I, do I send one over to, to Steve or, or those guys over at AE2S that they aren't already looking at it at the same time as I am. They're very aware about, about this public facilities authority, getting ready to get back open. Initially, the government sent out notification and the government changed its mind. And they said, we were not going to be able to apply for that in 2025. So we all put our brain on pause. And all of a sudden, here came a, a email. And I said, oh, Jeff, I'm like, here came an email saying, hey, we're opening this up. And oh, by the way, your application is due in March to get on the intended use permit for these projects. And Jeff is familiar as well. You can have multiple projects on that list and we should get them on the list. And this is one of the benefits of, of hiring AE2S, who is familiar and progressive in, in, in that type, proactive, excuse me, in getting us on the proper list.
So on your, on your EDA board, I mean, a lot, a lot of good business guys on there and they're all Crookston taxpayers. Do you have 100% support from them on this project?
Yeah.
Yeah. They voted for it.
Yeah, Nick came off the board and he called me this morning to make sure that, that I was standing up here today to say, hey, we worked really hard on this and it looks like a good project. The other thing I would say, Delaine, is when we're looking at general obligation bonds, and this is not to ever make any decisions for council or to put words in Jeff's mouth. But if you have $100,000 or $200,000 that you needed to add on to a general obligation bond that you don't want to take out of the general fund, while we're working through economic projects, we can put that in there so we're making smaller payments until we get bulk in there too. We're not stuck with just the Red River Valley. And Jeff, maybe you want to address what I just said and clean me up on that. You talk a lot.
There, there are always, it is always more cost effective to wrap smaller projects together and bond in one bond rather than many small bonds. As an example, the bond, this particular bond, the bond is for 1.595, so just shy of 1.6 million. Our net after costs and expenses is 1.412.
Something like that.
If my memory serves correctly. Part of that difference, which is about $180,000, part of that difference is capitalized interest. They set it aside in an escrow fund. That's what makes those first initial payments that Carrie was talking about. The others are for bond council for all of the expenses related to issuing the bond. So if you have a hundred thousand dollar, no, no city in its right mind is going to bond for $100,000. It just costs too much money. You want, the sweet spot is kind of a minimum three. 1.5, 1.6 is still very doable. The expenses, the expense ratio gets a little higher, but it's not ridiculously high like it would be on a hundred or $500,000 bond. With the, as we move forward, over the next five to, five to 10 years, you're likely, we will likely be looking at five to $6 million bonds in chunks as we break down this 130 million. Most of those bond payments will be paid from water and sewer fund. A general breakdown when we put the roads, water, sewer, stormwater, the waters department, and this is a rule of thumb. This is not a set number. Rule of thumb, usually 30% comes from water, 30% comes from wastewater, 30% comes from sewer, 10% is levy obligated. Or I'm sorry, not sewer or not waste, stormwater, special assessments. And then 10% goes levy obligated. Those numbers fluctuate up and down depending on what work needs to be done. If this wastewater line, if the water lines are already plastic and in good shape, we're not going to replace them. So water will not be contributing to that.
So, so just one other question. And 2027, I think, starts the highway project coming through Crookston, right?
Yes.
And we, the city is going to have a, some type of an obligation on that. Is that correct?
That is. Brandon, Chuck and I are working through, we're not, we don't have a final number. We're trying to, there are a lot of ancillary projects that if we had unlimited funds, it would make perfect sense to go through the entire path of the Highway Two project and redo everything in that path, all the connectors, all of the sides. As an example, from Robert Street down to the bridge. That is, we're looking at possibilities because Brandon has identified that there's not much really that needs to be done there other than the road width isn't going to match the road width further up. Does it make sense that we simply restripe it and not necessarily rebuild it and resurface it? That can save us a significant amount of money, probably very close to seven figures.
Hey Jeff, I want to interrupt on that just quickly, just for clarification, because the community has heard that we did receive a grant, an active transportation grant to do that part of the road. What's happened is because of the increase in the, then the, so I don't, because I don't want to mislead with the community, what we, because we do have a grant for that. But we're looking at, the costs are increasing so much that we're looking at absorbing the grant that we got to do, that portion that Jeff is talking about, to see if we can get a deviation so we can actually incorporate that to offset our costs on the Highway Two corridor. But we'll keep looking at other grants to offset those as well. Is that, okay.
Fair statement. So right, right now, the number, the numbers from Highway Two, all inclusive, we're looking at five plus million if we do everything. Chuck, Brandon and I are working on how can we manipulate, move those numbers to make it more advantageous to the city without, without impacting the usability and the structure and safety of the citizens? We want to make sure that we have one unified project, but there are other ways that we can move around to save some.
We have the Tri-County Building as well, right? And that's?
That will have to come down before '27.
And how much, how much do we have, the city have to, to put towards that project?
Right now, we are still searching for those funds. Part of that is Carrie, we've had Carrie and her staff and I have had some higher, higher level discussions.
I think we put it on pause. So, so we put it on pause briefly.
Carrie, the only question that, I mean, I'm, I'm getting at is, yeah, I, everything that you're saying, I am on board.
Well, Delaine, we've been talking for a lot of years, you and I.
The problem is, is I, we got these projects coming down the road, the highway project, the Tri-County Building and, and a lot of stuff that we need to do. And I don't want to get to the position where we have to do them. We get to the highway project and we, we can't do that. But, you know, we don't, we can't match or put our funds in to do, to handle our responsibility towards that without taxing our residents through the roof more than we already are.
I agree.
And one of the things, as we had mentioned before, out of all of the bonds that we have for other work, it would be, it would be very easy to add the Tri-Valley Building demo into one of those and the payment, the additional bond payment on that would not be a significant increase over the anticipated extra. That's because it would increase the bond into that economic scale at that point.
And I called Deed and we're, we're holding off on applying in February because we just feel like the timing was with all the other stuff going on with, we agreed to hold on. But you can submit for redevelopment grant in February and I believe it's August, Delaine. So 50% of that we can get. And we can have nine, 10, 12, 15 redevelopment grants in the city. I called Deed. The more the merrier. They're happy to help us to continue as long as we are good stewards with the, with the first grant, the second grant. So we'll continue to go at that. And then to Jeff's point, we can wrap that. I think our bid on that, I'm just going to guesstimate because I know we're going to have an actual bid, but it was like around 500, let's just say. But I'm not going to say that as official because some are higher, some are lower. But if that's it, let's say it was 250, just per site. Please don't quote that as a fact, anybody who's listening from anywhere. It's not a fact, but that's a guess. I mean, we've gotten a couple of good estimates. That 250 could be wrapped into a bond and then we could clean that, clean that up. There's also streetscape grants out there. We can help with ADA compliance to help with some of our sidewalks. We're just slowly working through to see what the government comes up. We just had an election. We just had an inauguration. So now some of the initiatives are changing. There's going to be some infrastructure coming down from federal. We'll see if that lands over here. We just have to keep getting our taxpayer dollars back into Crookston to help our community.
The bond impact on that Tri-Valley, if we were to add that amount, basing that on a half, on a half a million dollars, we'd be looking at a $35,000 to $40,000 bond payment. And if we had a grant that covered half of the costs, obviously that would have that amount. So it would, it would, it would be approximately $20,000.
And that's been identified as a, as a perfect place to put a, a multi-use facility that we looked at, where it has a retail type on the bottom and then you have your apartments above it and overlooking the river. So it's, but it would have to be down by the library side. It couldn't be up by the corridor because then we'd have the same problem we currently have.
We talked, we talked about that a few years ago. And the problem with that, that whole type of building is they wanted to leave us as the landlord of the bottom floor and.
I think that was a specific negotiation with a particular business owner. I don't think that's the.
Right, no, I don't. I'm just saying that's what, kind of take that whole, that whole deal. Because the city, I, I mean, I was part of, I didn't want to be a landlord and being responsible for trying to find somebody and, and to be a tenant in that bottom portion.
I think it would be more of us looking for developers who are interested in actually developing that out and not that being an obligation of the city.
Yeah.
All right. I mean, other than that, is there any other projects that I missed in my, that are, that are?
No, sir. I think, I think we, I think we have a good, through the discussion of all the members, I think we have, and with Carrie, I think we, we have a good idea. And as I had mentioned to Carrie prior to the meeting, it is not that I'm saying this is a bad, I just felt that the council needs to have all of the information in front of them to make an informed decision.
I mean, I'm not going to lie. I mean, I, I, I like everything that you're doing, Carrie. It's just, it's just, it's just risky for me to, if, if everything doesn't pan out the way you don't get the grants and it, or the worst case scenario, what does that look like for our city? Which I don't think that's going to happen. I, I, I mean, I really don't think that, but I mean.
Do you really think we're not going to have one business come in in the next 26 years? It's going, it's going to want to go into a place that has infrastructure, water, sewer, curb, gutter, road, Highway Two frontage?
Right.
I think the worst case scenario is not, I think the worst case scenario is us doing nothing to bring people here. Because to your point, in five years, no. But if we don't do anything, 20, 30, 40, 50 years, we're going to be in a really, that's worst case scenario.
I agree with that.
And the building will still be there.
Right, right. I mean, at the end of the day, and it'll still have asbestos.
That's the thing. I mean, I know this is our opportunity to get rid of that building. If we don't take it now, it's probably never going to happen again. So I mean, I, that is on my mind. So I mean, yeah.
I think, I mean, I made it very clear throughout all of budgeting, like water and sewer and all of that is like basic needs of a community and an important thing. So I, I thank you for this and am not discrediting it. I'm just trying to think long term, how do we pay for this? And the only way to do, I mean, get bonds and all of that, but like getting more people here, creating new jobs and daycare and people building their own houses and like, we have to start somewhere with something.
But I think to Jeff's point, it's Jeff's point to, to say, we have no money and here's where our budget is, this is what it is. It's my job to tell you, here's the potential, so.
Yeah. I appreciate the conservatism, yeah.
We have a full picture.
Yeah, exactly.
I need the conservative and the opti, you know, sunshine optimist. Yeah. Well, I, I think the other thing.
But what I would say, I have a very strong rep.
Yes, and that's the other thing.
In, in the last decade, in this region, of bringing in businesses, in 2021, we opened up $100 million worth of business in Norman County.
Yeah.
Now, I don't know that we're going to hit Swine Farm, Dairy Farm and all the other stuff in Crookston itself because it won't fit. But I think that, that, that the intent and the effort and the partnerships that have been, that have been put together over the last decade in my career have given us some strong alliances to at least give us a good chance at anything that is out there. The other thing is where Deed is working very strongly with us to market this community. And they're very proud of this community. And a lot of people have their eye on Crookston. You'll be hearing more projects because Crookston is a great community. We have great amenities. Just meeting with the community, the downtown development and all the different, the community foundation, all the things that are here, the, the individuals that are working so hard to make it happen. If we can just help give them a boost, I think we're going to see a lot of fun things. And I just want to just go sit down. But 2026 is the 250th anniversary of the United States. Happy birthday. So what are we going to do? Just want to get that on the public's radar. What are we going to do to celebrate 250 years as America? So, thank you, guys. I'm open for questions if you have it.
I think just a couple of things to think of. One is I keep thinking about like past opportunities that we've given up, like DigiKey and like the UPS planes coming into our airports, right? So I, I, I don't want this to be that next thing, right? I think the other thing in, in the point about Deed using us as a location. So a lot of times businesses will come from other states and be like, hey, what are some locations that are right for the opportunity for our new business and blah, blah, blah? And because of the relationships that we currently have and because of the things that we're doing, that also is another place that we're on the radar for other businesses that potentially want to come in here. And I think that needs to be also considered, not outside of what Keenan and, and you're doing about advertising our, our community to other places. But Deed also has like this list that businesses will be like, hey, we're thinking about coming to Minnesota. We'd like your X, Y, and Z.
Taylor responds to those requests fairly regularly in our department. And the other thing, Deed has given us a MIF grant for, for North Star Lime. They gave us $452,000 for the AIC Innovation Campus Road. They have now granted the 1.4 million for this project. We're going to go after it again for probably about $2 million for the industrial park. So it's a lot of good things. And the state has got their eye on us right now and we're doing a really good job. So I'm very happy about that.
All right. Thank you.
And Delaine, Delaine, to speak to one, one of the items that you had mentioned, there's a thing in public administration called ripeness. And right now, to speak to the opportunity, we have a willing seller. We have a grant. If we do not, and like I said, I want the council to have all of the perspectives. If we do not move forward with it, there is also the risk it gets sold to someone else and we cannot say for any certainty, as you had mentioned, when the opportunity to take up this project again may rise.
Yep. Okay, let's call for the vote, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Plot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hema?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item seven point zero two is a resolution calling a public hearing on the proposed modification to the development program for the municipality development district number three. The proposed establishment of tax increment financing district number three dash twelve, Red River Valley Winter Show Grounds, a redevelopment district. And the proposed adoptions of the tax increment financing TIF plan.
Thank you, we have a motion to approve this resolution.
Your honor.
Thank you, Tim, is there a second?
I'll second it.
I guess I heard Morgan first.
Sure.
Okay, discussion, Jeff hanging out.
Mayor, members of the council, this is rather straightforward. This is an enabling resolution allowing us to move forward with the creation of the required TIF district in order to begin to begin that process. Without it, we will not be able to form the TIF and we will not have any increment financing to assist with the bonds. Again, this is a rather straightforward enabling resolution.
Thank you, further discussion? Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Plot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hema?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item seven point zero three is a resolution regarding engagement of Clifton Larson Allen LLP to perform specific accounting services.
Thank you, to have a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll make that motion, your honor.
Clayton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Henry, discussion?
Mayor and members of council, as you know, Clifton Larson Allen, as we generally call them CLA, has been performing various accounting processes for us. They began in preparation for the previous audit. They've identified some other process oriented items. This is for this is a continuation agreement requested by them for the new year. Housekeeping item generally, for council's awareness, we do have a hundred thousand dollars in the budget for this. We will be weaning ourselves and minimizing their service as the years as the year progresses. Holly has already made some moves. They have completed the January, February check reconciliation. There were some issues that council is aware of already that were very timely in moving that forward. We're moving towards having our in-house accountant take over the check reconciliations beginning in March. And moving forward on that with limited assistance from CLA. It's much less or it's much more cost effective for us to do check reconciliations in-house. And that will free up CLA to work on the processes and procedures to clarify, clear up the audit notes that we had in our last audit while keeping ourselves within our but within or below our budgeted amounts for the year.
So are, when are we gonna start getting the monthly reports for our finances?
I believe we've we have anticipated end of March for the reconciliations to be complete for twenty four so that we can then brief the council and begin our begin quarterly reports at that point. And we can have monthly reports for expense, general expenses and revenues.
Okay, and then we are we are on track this year to make our, is it June first?
We are not on track to make our audit. At this point, we do not have an audit auditor identified. We've gone out for bid and we've had zero responses to our RFP. We are, Holly, myself and Lance are still continuing to reach out to audit firms to find someone to take us on.
But why is, why aren't we getting any?
There is a shortage of government auditors. The requirements to do a government audit require specific years of experience in government accounting. And nationwide, there is a shortage and many firms are scaling back their municipal auditing services. And they don't, they no longer have the capacity because they don't have the staff to maintain.
So other cities are in the same situation as us?
Many other cities are in similar situations.
Is there anything that the league is doing to help with this situation or?
I it, there's really not much the league can do because it's it's a manpower issue. It's finding qualified accountants.
Last two that did our audits?
Brady Marsh.
Miller McDonald and Brady Marsh. Miller McDonald is no longer doing accrual based auditing. They don't have the staff to support it. They were under, we were under con, we were under an agreement, a service agreement for one more year, I believe. But they scaled back their services because they don't have the staff to be able to complete them.
And Brady Marsh is not.
Uh, we have, Brady Marsh, I believe, has, is that the firm that had the conflict?
Um, yeah, we didn't receive a submission from them.
I I did reach, I have reached out with a firm. I'm awaiting to hear back. It would be virtual, they would be able to be here virtually and we could send it, but it's uploads very similar to the platform that Holly used previously. I've used them in the past with, when I was with Madison Lake, they do a very good job of the very thorough job. They normally do not work in this region of Minnesota, however, I'm trying to call in a favor.
So what what's the worst case scenario if we can't find an auditing auditor?
State?
State auditor.
The state, and that's very, very pricey. Imagine double or triple the normal cost. Would you say that's accurate, Holly?
And we can't get a break, can we?
The state requires us to have an audit and then they'll charge us double to do it. Yeah, unfortunately not. I don't mean to make light, but it is a very serious circumstance. And Holly, Lance and I are working diligently to try to find someone willing to move forward.
So having said that, outside of like actually just having the auditor, do you feel that we're initially being prepared to provide the information that's needed?
I think I think we are in a much better position than we were for the twen, from what I've gathered, that we were in the twenty three audit. We're still peeling back onions, but the layers are getting few further in between. We're we're getting more to the meat of everyday accounting and we're getting caught up. So now that we've had twenty four and we had CLA in place, a lot of the base processes are being followed.
So when when's the, when when do we start to panic and when do we have to make a call to the state? I mean, obviously, we can't just make a call to the state and they say, yeah, we'll get on that here next week. So what, I mean, is there a, do we make, do we have conversations with them and say, hey, we're having trouble finding? And and then can you put us on the schedule for, because that we ha, we'll have to go that route if we can't find an auditor, right?
That that is basically the direction we have to go, yes.
So is there something we can do in advance to prepare the state for possibly?
I mean, there still is extensions that you could get.
Yeah, there are, there are extensions.
Obviously, we're the, we're the best town in the state for getting extensions.
We're the captain of extensions, yeah.
So I mean.
They'll be expecting it from us.
I just don't wanna get in a situation where we are are.
Trying to be proactive.
If I can't get a commitment for something in the next week to two weeks, I believe Holly and I will probably reach out just to to the state to identify that we've gone out for bid and we're having issues.
Just, just, I don't know if you have the numbers now or no, but what's an audit cost and?
In our circumstance, I'd say anywhere from thirty five to fifty.
So we're probably looking at seventy to a hundred from the state if we.
Say that's fair, Holly?
All right.
So do you have like a a deadline that you're just gonna decide to talk to the state?
Uh, probably. I would say I will, I will commit to if I don't have an answer prior to the next meeting, I will contact. Holly and I will contact the state and make them aware of our circumstance.
Because I have to think that if we're the not the only city having this issue, other cities are contacting the state and then they might be backlogged.
I can guarantee the state will be backlogged because they're gonna audit the state, they're gonna audit state functions before they bother with us. And then they'll fi, then they'll bother with the counties and then we'll be on the list underneath that.
Do you know who does the the county's audit?
It's very, Holly can speak to it better than I can, but very similar to us, they they put out for a bid for.
I'm just curious who possibly took up the bid for the county?
They already have the county and they don't have enough people, so they wouldn't put in a bid, so.
So who was it?
Um, it's Hoffman, Phillips and Martell out of St. Andrews.
Okay.
So they've got a lot of the area county.
Okay.
Further discussion? Carrie, now can I roll call, please?
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Plot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Hema?
Aye.
Jertie?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item seven point zero four is discussion regarding the Minnesota Department of Transportation Active Transportation Infrastructure Grant Program to existing Fairfax Trail west along Third Avenue Southwest and then north, northeast following Old Highway seventy five towards downtown.
Thank you, I guess this is a discussion item. Carrie has more information on this, I think, than Jeff. I've got a little bit.
I would agree with that.
This is the project that came out of our Emergent Small Minnesota Communities Grant that we got from University Minnesota Design Center. I was identified during one of our community meetings, there's probably about a, right around a hundred people, I think, maybe at the Cove. Uh, and we were identifying the trails, the safety, some of the the danger zones, if you would, in Kirkston. And I, you know, Dale, I think you were there and you actually had got us onto that trail because there's a lot of people walking to work there. And it's down the industrial park, it's where the hospital is, it's where the all of their, what is that gas station down where people get their groceries?
Ampride. Ampride.
Yeah, so so that's where that came out of. That project, uh, right now it does have, it has an additional, is it a hundred ninety thousand?
One ninety one.
One ninety one. It can be scaled down, it could be scaled up, it'll depend on how the bids come in. And if gas prices go down, obviously, the price of that will go down. Or it could possibly be wrapped into a bond if you want to keep it in there, but if you want to end it earlier, we could look at putting the scope down on that, so. Any questions for us on that?
I guess this trail would go by Eichoff, New Flyer. The, there is traff, well, traffic on there now that people walk it, you know, and it's difficult to see them in the winter months. But, you know, it's, we get the grant dollars, but it's still, you know, we've got a cost share with it. And it took us forever to get the Fairfax Trail we have now.
The cost share on this is, we're applying, we, we hundred percent no match on that, but there's engineering is, which is where we got. You know, that's where the, that's where the cost is. There's a grant out there for two hundred thousand that we'll be asking to apply for to help us to offset the engineering cost, uh, costs for that. Am I right on that?
So what, the engineering cost is a hundred ninety grand?
Guesstimating.
Um, if I may.
Yeah.
Um, so the engineering cost came in at just over two hundred thousand dollars. So there is a grant from the Department of Natural Resources that would cover up to two hundred thousand dollars of those engineering expenses. Uh, the remaining estimate for things like right of way acquisition and permits, that would, the city would be responsible for is a hundred ninety one thousand dollars. And that, of course, would depend on if any right of way acquisitions actually need to take place or what building and construction permits are required.
At this time, it doesn't look like we need to make acquisitions, but we didn't want to put nothing in there and then come up with something later. So we estimated high on that. And there's also railroad crossing that we don't know if if we can get somebody to pay for besides us. Because the railroad, there's a.
Yep.
So the railroad, uh, when tracks cross the street, they've got concrete panels that kind of are prefabbed and fit into the rail. In order to build a trail crossing, that concrete slab essentially has to be extended. Um, but the railroad has informed us that you can't just add a new concrete slab, you have to replace the whole thing and make it longer. So, um, I believe that Mindot, who, uh, the agency funding the active transportation grant would cover all of that. But there is a chance they would say, we only want to cover the part that is impacted by the trail.
So again, we're guessing high as opposed to low on on looking at our estimates for. We worked with A to S on the estimates, we feel fairly confident with the est, estimates on it.
You can always move the crossing fifty feet down the way.
Well, you know, by, if this project, excuse me, project does happen, I mean, maybe by that time the railroad crossing that BN would have to replace it because it's pretty rough now.
Yeah, so so there are other things, there's other bushes to shake out there, but we didn't want to misrepresent.
Sure.
So, anything else?
I don't think so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Item seven point zero five is discussion regarding the policies and procedures regarding the city administrator's performance review.
Thank you, this is another discussion item.
Um, I just wanted, I was looking through this and I just had a couple of questions. And I know that we don't have any like standard operating procedure for this. And I do have some concerns that I gonna wanted to bring forward about the performance evaluation. I think that probably aren't necessarily fair to Jeff. Um, and also just kind of, um, I I just, the whole process is, I've I've questioned. Um, I think one of the big things is that if we're doing some type of performance evaluation, it would seem that as a council, those would be decisions that we'd be making as to like who was part of that evaluation process, how it was compiled, um, what some of the questions were. I think specifically, my bigger concerns and things that I had brought forth without response was that, you know, I think that, um, our city clerk, I think the assistant to the, um, uh, the city administrator should also be part of that. And there wasn't any response to that. And so I'm just curious to what we think as a council as to who should have actually been part of this evaluation process. But I I'm just kind of concerned because we didn't really get a ton of information going forward. On that note, I also want to be very appreciative to Morgan, I know you took a lot of time and energy to put this forward. Um, I think some of the conversation that I've had with Jeff about this too is that some of this seemed a little bit more like NA, like non-accable to us because of the things that we aren't privy to. And I don't think it's necessarily fair to him to have us reading things that we don't really have anything maybe outside of anecdotal evidence. I also think that, you know, if we're really gonna go by what this evaluation says, um, it clearly states in here with the directions that we would have gotten a memorandum from the city administrator, um, but listing our accomplishments and doing all those things. And we didn't receive any of that information prior to us having to turn these in. And so, um, and one of the things that Jeff and I had had talked about is like, there's gotta be maybe a better opportunity. And and I don't know how old this evaluation is, but it seems a little antiquated for what it is. And I know that we had looked at one of the professional development websites that you were part of. And that was why that was sent out to everybody on, was it Friday? We had the conversation.
Yeah, the, yeah, it was simply, it was a, it's a template model for a city manager's evaluation for the International City Managers Association.
But I I do wonder that this should be a council decision going forward, that we have a standard operating procedure of how we make these decisions as to, A, who gets the opportunity to evaluate, um, council or the city administrator, um, what that survey looks like, you know? Do we look it over and decide that?
I I I hear what you're saying, I mean, I think, I think from what I understand, it went out to the 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 council members and the department heads.
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't think it needs to go to anybody other than that.
Well, I I I would disagree with you and I think that should be, again, a council decision, not a decision that one or two people make. I would wonder why you wouldn't decide the city clerk who works closely with Jeff or the city administrator, their administrative assistant would be part of that as well.
Just in my experience in business, when when a, when a manager of an area is not getting evaluated, you know, first of all, he 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 goes to his people that he reports to. And then if they want to do a peer peer review, that's taken on a separate, separate level, not probably necessarily um, on the same level as what the what the person reports to. So I mean.
I I don't quite understand what you mean by that. I would say that the people who work most closely with him should be part of that. And I don't, I think it's just regarding the importance of the city clerk's position.
I mean, the people that work close with him are the department heads.
And the city clerk. But shouldn't have the opportunity. And then my other question is, did you have the opportunity to provide the evaluation?
I did not, nor would I find that appropriate, because I.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because, and then Wendy, did you have the opportunity?
I did not.
So those are also the things that I think should be part of the council conversation before sending out an evaluation like this. So I I just really question that. I I shared beforehand with both the mayor and Morgan that until I received that information, I wouldn't turn in my evaluation. So I have not turned my evaluation in because I didn't think it was appropriate to be rating anybody. Uh, that's, I mean, like this, this isn't regardless of my evaluation, this accomplishment rating skews his overall scores. So again, I don't think that's fair to him. I don't think that the way the process really worked was effective. I don't know if the questions necessarily were the best for what it is.
I mean, I I I thought it was a great way to do the evaluation and I really appreciate the roll up to to get a good sense on, you know, where everybody has a sense on how the administrator is doing. I mean, if you take out the outliers and everybody's pretty much right in the middle where he's meeting, he's in between a meeting expectations and.
Yeah, you need, yeah, yeah.
That's not appropriate.
Yeah.
I guess I went to HR and I asked, you know, about evalu, you know, evaluation packets or performance reviews. And I took her recommendation as far as the one she thinks we should use.
Great, I don't think any of that conversation was had as a council. And according to the charter, the mayor has no administrative duties. And so I'm just curious as to why that wasn't a conversation that was had with us as a council, if we're the ones that should be making that decision. That's all I'm asking. I think there should have been a larger conversation that was had with the whole council, making these decisions as to who initially is the ones that are evaluating the city administrator, what that performance evaluation looks like and how that goes forward. Are you asking that we, I mean, one way or the other, are you asking that we scrap and start over? I would say either postpone and decide whether or not that we're gonna allow the clerk and maybe the city administrator and if there's anybody else that we find to be appropriate individuals to, um, evaluate Jeff or look at the template that Jeff provided and then redo it that way. I I don't know if it necessarily needs to be that extreme, but I also think that if nothing else, I think it should be provided to more than just the directors and the council.
I, I agree with a lot what Mr. D says. I was wanting to fact, same fact was why Ashley, the assistant administrator, was not given. was not given the opportunity because they work alongside. And as Christie said and I'm saying is that I felt that, uh, it wasn't done correctly because of the fact that it wasn't, the stuff brought forward was the administrative goals we're looking at. And, uh, I feel that we should have one or two city employees. Like you said, I have no idea how he has worked with city staff. I'm not here to see it and I'm including all city staff. Doesn't mean you have to have every employee, but one or two from the street department or from the different departments to evaluate.
If you're gonna, in all offense to Tina or Ashley Butt, where do you draw the line? Okay, so we had Tina and Ashley, do we add Lynn, do we add Scott Butt?
Well, I don't, I don't think you have to go that, I, I just think, if nothing else, I think.
I mean, why, why not? Why, why just two and not, not, not more?
I, I personally would say, I think if nothing else, I think the city clerk. I think that she holds, just as not significant working alongside.
I understand, uh, her important, uh, role in the city, but she's also a union employee.
Okay.
Should that come into question? I don't know.
I don't know, does that come into question, Tanner?
I don't know, we're, we're trying to address the union employee thing on a, on a side note, but I don't think it, I get, uh, the old points that, uh, she is a union employee and there are a whole lot of other employees that are union and, um, I don't think there's anything that would restrict her from providing her.
So I, I think the other thing is, I mean, if we do decide to just keep this evaluation, um, that the council has the ability to now review what's been provided as far as the list and actually accurately vote on or circle on what rating they'd like. And then that's also compiled as part of the overall performance evaluation. So I, I guess what I would propose at this point is that we keep, just for the sake of the time and effort that's been put forward, is that we keep the current evaluation, but allow council to actually, and directors, um, and Ashley, the opportunity to like review this whole thing, provide, now that we have accomplishments and that we have their self-review, and add that and actually make sure that the initial weighted portion of the back, the overall is actually accurate now that we have that information. Um, because the information was not provided for us prior to you having the due date of the thirteenth. So I think if we're gonna utilize this one, let's actually do it right.
I mean, I, I think it was.
As the evaluation says.
It was done right, I, I, I personally would just like the department heads and the council and the mayor and, and that's it. I think that's where we draw the line.
I mean, I, I, I personally asked HR, just asking like where they thought it should be and the question got brought up, where, where does that line get drawn? Thing, issues can arise from that, right, of picking and choosing then outside of department head. So it just sets a clear line of department heads on that. I'm not discrediting you or anyone else, right? Like that was just the directive from there. Um, as the person that took and compiled, I don't think that's a secret from anyone. I just literally picked up the information, put it in an Excel document. I did have a section, a tab that I had created for, well, actually, when I had put it together, I had split it between council and department heads. Luckily, nobody had indicated who they were on any of that because I was planning on having to redact all that. Luckily, that didn't happen, so literally on all of the information, it was all scanned, given to everybody. That is just what I picked up. I had a tab there to add that in and an equation to be added in there as a weighted section there um, to take that confusion out of what was printed, what wasn't. I had removed it, easily add it back in quickly. I mean, whether we want to do it at the closed session later, however we want to do, I, I did have a section for that with, it wasn't there, so for that information to be given. Um, I guess, just so everyone's aware, that's just how I did it. I just literally picked up the information, put it in an Excel document, had a simple equation for averages, yeah.
I mean, I think, I think we're overthinking this. I mean, I think the, the process that we had was, was done pretty well.
Well, I, I, my, my bigger concern, Elaine, is that we weren't given any of that information.
What?
We weren't given any of that information.
What do you mean?
All we were given was this and told us that it was due the thirteenth. None of the like how it was going to be compiled, who was going to be giving it, none of that information was.
Compiled, got the information, but I mean.
What I said is, we weren't told who was gonna compile it, when we would be given this information, who actually got to choose to be on the, the opportunity to evaluate. None of that information was provided for us. And I, I don't know if anybody else, but like I sold multiple of these that said, we don't have this information and then they still rated the accomplishments. I mean, I don't know if that's accurate information. I mean, if we're gonna do this, let's do it right, let's do it by the book.
If, if I'm, if I may, members of council, uh, in most city manager evaluations or city administrator evaluations, in my experience, both as an elected official and as a city administrator, the primary evaluators are the council. I, ICMA identifies as a requirement for department heads, direct report subordinates, i.e. department heads, I believe, I'm not sure the exact wording that they use, uh, within five years of applying for credentialing as a credential manager. ICMA's process identifies that it is the norm for an evaluation, that it is the council. The original evaluation here was put out to the council and I want everyone to be aware that it was my request that the department heads be included in that because I've only been here for six months and identifying as council member Jody has identified and council member Briggs, uh, many of you do not work day-to-day with me. I keep contact with, with everyone, however, that day-to-day and I felt that the department head input would have been, was valuable for an overall picture.
I, yeah, I get that.
Uh, and so I just wanted to let the council know that it was by my request that department heads were included and to that effect, it was, I, I felt that that was just a clear, easily defensible line to, for inclusion versus exclusion.
So Jeff, can I ask who else is your director port?
Pardon?
Besides directors, who else are your director ports?
HR, Ashley, Tina, and Gabe.
And Keen, what did you?
Pardon?
Keenan, is he your director port, Keenan?
Oh, and Keenan for now.
So wouldn't it make sense to have your director ports then, if that's what you're saying?
Again, it was just a, a clear delineation.
Sure.
Um, as department heads, that is the, that is the normal route of a three sixty would be department, by the, by the title, department heads through. Uh, it was, it wasn't through any animosity or exclusionary thought. It was just a clear, easily identifiable, uh, and again, as was brought up earlier, if everyone in city hall, then now we have the accountant who also works in city hall, we have the water.
And I, and I don't think that's necessarily the right way.
So at that point, now we're opening that can of worms where it starts giving life of its own.
I, I, I think that we just leave it with, uh, council and department heads.
I don't know, anyone else?
Well, my big concern is that I didn't, uh, I wasn't able to review Jeff's self-evaluation and that was part of the scoring system.
Tim, that's why I, I left that section out of there with the intent to add it back in with the discussion that we had today, um, if we want to push that back and somehow anonymously send that, like I, I, I don't want to know whose scoring was.
For me, overall, it's an issue of fairness to Jeff.
Right.
You know, that's what my big concern is.
Correct, that, that is why I did not include that section there and that's not included in the roll-up. Um, but that, that was why I had scanned it and sent it over. Just, just so everyone's clear on how those roll-ups were put together.
I think there should also should just be a conversation going forward about what the standard operating procedure is and what the council decides on and how, who's provided the information, I mean, just for the transparency of it. Like outside of getting this, I had no other information and I requested information and still didn't get the information. And so, like, if we want to be transparent about.
Christie, I emailed back you and Tanner.
To a point.
Correct, but you are feeling, no, I wouldn't say that.
I'm starting to think that if it's not done the way that you want it done, then it's not done right.
No, I was asking questions that I didn't get answers on. Christie, I answered you back to the best of my ability to answer and I was feeling, I mean, I don't know what I have done for you to question my credibility or my character, but there was.
That wasn't the.
But I will say, it was coming across that way and that was why I answered the way I did because I just felt to just give the information that I had and no assuming, no, this is what I think, none of that, because I was, you can, you can say that you feel that way.
Yeah, I asked a question and got no answers for four days from anybody. Kind of the only reason why I added addition, I added Tanner additionally. My questions were that anything on this should have been, those, those questions should have been answered for us. And I felt like this was not very, very well thought out by the fact that we didn't get the memorandum and any of the information. And I asked, who was actually given this, this review and who gets to evaluate and who doesn't? And who makes those decisions? And none of those questions were answered. And so, this didn't feel like a good, transparent process. I think from the get-go, if we were given this, we should have had that information immediately. That also should have been a council decision and not something that was randomly given to us in a Manila envelope and then we were just told to fill it out and, and no other information. Like, that's not a good way of handling this. I'm not saying that my way is the best way, but I would also like to have the information provided to me as to like how this process came about because it obviously wasn't our conversation in our council meetings. And if we're a strong council, weak mayor, I'm just questioning why this wasn't a, a more clear, delineated process. And that's why I asked, we should have a standard operating procedure as to like how this goes forward, so I'm not having to ask these questions. Because I didn't feel like this was part of a discussion this council had. And maybe I'm wrong, but I did not get that. And when I went to ask those questions, I wasn't given all the answers and that's where I started to get concerned.
Well, I mean, Henry, you've been pretty quiet, what, what's your thoughts on the whole thing? I mean, you think it's?
I mean, I think that, you know what, for what we have, for the information, this guy came in and walked in six months ago. Anybody, we're gonna be using some pretty vague language for stuff because he's right coming in, we can't really go hard on specifics anyway. Okay, we didn't like how this went, we can have that discussion and we can work this way. In six months, he'll have another one.
Sure.
We can fix it, but I mean, to be like, let's just chuck it and start over and do all that, but we can, we can fix the process and we can do some other stuff to make it a little, to make some people more comfortable with how it's going. But, I mean, I think just as is, this one will be good for this turn. We can make it better for the next one.
Well, when Jeff was hired too, you know, we didn't give him no direction as, as a council.
I'm not, I'm not, you don't need to argue that.
I'm not, just hold on, we finish. I mean, Jeff came in drinking through a fire hose right away with the budget. That's all he focused on was the budget, because we were behind the eight ball. So moving forward, I think we give Jeff some direction and we can tweak this, uh, performance review, like Henry said, down the road.
I don't think it has anything to do with Jeff's performance. It has to do with the process and it has to do with who actually gets the option to do this review.
Process, we'll fix it.
But that's not a Jeff issue.
We, right, we have a review in six months. Again, so we can fix the process, tweak it the way council wants.
Because I mean, this is the first time we've had an evaluate, that I've, since I've been on council, I've been on council for two years, it's the first time I've had a review.
You know, and I don't remember.
We haven't seen it.
And I don't remember having one with Amy.
We did.
I'm dead.
Yeah, we did, and it was similar, it was similar, except we didn't have the nice roll-up in what Morgan did. I mean, I really appreciate that, that's, that, that really helped a lot, so I mean. So what are we, what are we?
So I'll, I'll jump in here with the options. Um, this is just a discussion item, but I've heard, uh, council member Jody and council member Menard indicate that they would support, uh, postponing review, um, of this to allow for, one, further discussion on who could potentially be added for an evaluation and two, allow for the accomplishments to be distributed and then, um, input to be, uh, provided. If we go that route, the only way I see that we can, given that there's, the previous ones are anonymous, uh, they would need to be, uh, discarded and everyone would have to submit them again. Um, if that motion is made by councillor Menard or Jody, then goes around the council. If it's approved, we can postpone it to a later date. If it's denied, then we can go forward with the, uh, evaluation today. So it's gonna be a council vote.
And I can make a motion right now to approve the, what we did right now, right?
Uh, this is an emotion, I, this is a, was a discussion, I guess, but if you want to.
Good senses.
It's good senses, I mean, if we're not making any motions, I mean, it's my, my thought that we just move, move forward with what we just done. Like Henry said, tweak it however we want to tweak it at the, you know, at the next review.
I think if you do something, you should do it well the first time.
I mean, I think it was well, I think.
No, I, I, I'm by the book, by like what we actually have in here.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying, I'm not saying that, I think Morgan did a great job of compiling and what have you. But even then, I think that there was also some concern of like, and, and it's nothing against you and your character, I think just in general, having any one person that's on council or part of that maybe even would adhere to, to Jeff for the only reason that like, there's no real confidentiality. And it's not to say that Morgan isn't, I'm, I'm just telling you, there's been concern.
So you, you want to hire an outside source, uh, compile?
I think it would have been nice to have somebody that didn't answer to Jeff.
I don't answer to.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. Answered to Jeff or somebody that like one person on council got to make the decision about the confidentiality for whole council, that is what I'm saying.
I mean, I, I, I think you're really overthinking this and, I mean.
I provided.
Jeff answers to the council and, and Morgan is, you know, she has a background in probably doing this type of stuff. So I mean, why wouldn't you go with somebody that, that has a strong background in doing this type of stuff? So I mean, I don't have an issue with how we did it at all.
Great, there was no information, I would just like to clarify for that. There is no information that I saw that was not provided to council. I literally scanned, uploaded and saved and sent out everything that I saw.
And I, and I get that, I think too, prior to this, there was no information about how it was going to be compiled. None of that information was provided. So again, those were the concerns that were brought to my attention, I'm just saying that. I, I personally feel that this should be postponed. I think that councils should have the opportunity to fill out the accomplishment section now that we have the information and then actually have it tallied appropriately the way it shows in this, to have it done the way that it's actually proposed in the evaluation. Why wouldn't we want to follow this?
I mean, I, I think what we did was fine, move on, do it again in six months and take your input then.
So I'm just gonna jump in, Christie, can we take what you said as a motion to postpone?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second and then roll call Ashley.
Fisher?
Nay.
Briggs?
Nay. Excuse me, aye.
Did you, did you get the right answer, Asher?
I don't know.
Well, he just seconded it.
Yeah. So do you say?
Wow, that just happened.
Mm-hmm.
Kate?
Brecken?
Nay.
Plot?
Nay.
Menard?
Aye.
Himma?
Nay.
Jody?
Aye.
So there was two, two, one, two, three, four, five.
Three to four, right?
Yeah, three, four.
Did you change it, Tim?
Uh, I think council member Briggs intended to say aye.
Okay.
But regardless, it's.
So do I get a vote, yes?
Yep. So based on that, it's my understanding that, uh, we're proceeding with the evaluation tonight and we can move into the closed session.
Yeah, because it's failed, because you have to have five, don't you?
Yeah.
Of, to count fast and.
It would be a majority to postpone.
Okay.
But it's not that either. And then I guess motions, someone would need to motion to close the meeting pursuant to the-
Yeah, do you want me to read it?
Please.
Seven point zero six is closed session to discuss the city administrator's performance. A motion to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota Government Data Practice Act, specifically Minnesota State Statute thirty, thirteen D point zero five subdivision three A.
Yeah, do I have a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Morgan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Henry.
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Fisher?
Aye.
Briggs?
Aye.
Brecken?
Aye.
Plot?
Aye.
Menard?
Aye.
Himma?
Aye.
Jerdy?
Aye.
Okay.
If everybody would be able to get out to the council, and then we will adjourn.
The next item on the agenda is the summary of the closed session. We are going to defer providing that summary for the next open meeting, which is actually how it's supposed to be done under thirteen D point oh five subdivision three. The main reason for that is because there's a lot of information that is not public that I need to sift through. I want to make sure that we have provided a sufficient explanation of what was discussed at the closed meeting without providing any information that is not subject to public scrutiny. So that will be coming at the next public meeting.
Thank you. All right, moving on, council reports. Morgan, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Kristy.
I went to the CBB meeting this morning. They decided to go to quarterly meetings. They voted on a couple different grants and talked about the renewal process for the community voice and that's pretty good.
Thank you. Henry?
Nothing for me.
Thank you. Clayton?
Just, well, thank you for appointing me to the Laurel Board and the Library Board. I was on that board quite some time and looking forward to serving there.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Derek?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
Nothing tonight.
And Jim?
Just a heads up that I accepted the nomination to be the president of the ETA. So I'm looking forward to taking on a leadership role with the Economic Development Authority.
Perfect, thank you. I just got one item. I attended the park board meeting this afternoon. They're moving the, because it's on the third Monday of the month, they're moving it to the second Monday of the month. And instead of four forty-five, they are gonna be meeting at four thirty. It'll be coming before console. They did some fee adjustments regarding pool, parks, campground. Their recommendations.
Do we have to have a public hearing for that?
Uh, okay. So like a fee cha- a fee schedule change?
Yeah.
Okay.
He presented, Jake presented it this afternoon to the park board.
Is that, can we do that still? Since it's already?
We just approved the fee schedule.
I think he was saying nothing was done since, well, twenty twenty-two.
I mean, I think that should come in.
Yeah, like we just voted on the pool stuff, like.
Nobody was looking at as far as rental fees for the, like, the parks, as far as renting the hut in the summer down at Wildwood Park.
Sure.
Um.
That was all in the fee schedule. That was just approved at the, uh, second to the last council meeting. So that was just all approved.
Yeah.
You just saw it and never depended.
Yeah, no, we just voted on that.
I mean, you can always bring forth an amendment at any time if that is the directive. Yes, we can.
So he's, they're having the park board meeting the same night as council now?
Well, no, they're changing it now.
To the same night as council?
No, it was tonight on, because it was always on the third Monday. Now they're going to the second Monday of the month. And the time change has gone from four forty-five to four thirty. So I guess, um.
So either, Jeff, you gonna talk to him about that?
Yeah, see what's up with that.
I'll see what's going on with the fee schedules and all.
I was gonna say, I was at that park board meeting, give you just a little bit of clarification, and I'm paraphrasing. But it's to update some of the terminology for renting out the parks. The way that it's phrased right now is that there's a plat fee where it could be interpreted that if you pay the plat fee, then you get the reservation for the entire day, when that's not typically the case. So it's basically just to update the verbiage to say like, I don't know how they're.
Like four hours versus.
Like four hour walk instead of, you know, like there's a plat fee that then assumes that you get the entire day when that's not the case.
Or a minimum, I think a minimum, they're looking at a minimum time too, like two hours or three hours.
Yeah, that was undecided, but that's what they're looking at.
Jeff, can you look at that, see if that's something that needs to come to council?
Okay, that's all I got, so. Uh, nothing else coming before council? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.